I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We moved and seconded. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
That certifies closed session. Next, we're taking the roll. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here. I'd like to note that Ms. Hummel was unable to join us. She's traveling internationally for work today and sense her regrets. Item 3.02, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Excuse me. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Item 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. School Board Member Dr. Jim Beers was nominated and has accepted the position of Vice Chair of the Educational Advisory Committee of HARETTA. HARETTA stands for the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association. Congratulations, Dr. Beers. We know you will do a fantastic job of representing our community. The Pathways Project Family Night will be held tomorrow night at Warhild School from 6:30 to 7:30. In Pathways, a project-based environment, students learn how to take initiative, accept responsibility, build confidence, solve problems, work in teams, and communicate ideas with one another. This family night gives students the opportunity to demonstrate to their parents and peers the work they have been doing all year. We will have a formal presentation about the first year of the Pathways Project at the July board meeting. The First Annual Exceptional Games will take place on June 8th at Jamestown High School from 10:00 to 12:00 in the morning. This event has been organized by the Exceptional Eagles, a club that was highlighted in the Jamestown High School spotlight earlier this year. During the exceptional game, students will be paired with a club member to participate in field day-type exercises. I know it will be a great event, and I'd like to thank the faculty sponsors of the Exceptional Eagles for their work and dedication to bring this to reality. The class of 2017 will participate in commencement ceremonies on Saturday, June 17th, at the Kaplan Arena William &amp; Mary Hall. Jamestown High School's graduation will be held at 9:00 a.m., Lafayette High School will be at 1:00 p.m., and Warhild's ceremony starts at 5:00. Tickets are required to attend. This is one of the most important times of the year for WJCC as we celebrate student's success. We are so proud of our graduates and wish them all the best as they transition into the next phases of their lives. Those are all of my announcements this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, great. That brings us to item 5.01. We have a large crowd today for board recognitions. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We appreciate the opportunity to recognize these outstanding students before summer break begins. First, we recognize students involved in the summer residential governor schools. Summer residential governor schools provide high school juniors and seniors with intensive educational experiences. Students live on a college or university campus for up to four weeks in the summer. And during this time, students are involved in the classroom and laboratory work, field studies, research, individual and group projects and performances, and seminars with noted scholars and visiting artists. Students, as your name is called, please come forward to the front of the room up here to be recognized and remain up front for a group photograph. David Bass from Jamestown and Carly Calfee from Warhild will attend the Spanish Academy. Jamestown's Finn House and Lafayette's Allison Marcotte will both attend the French Academy.
Yeah, please come up here when your name is called. So happy to congratulate you.
Two students from Jamestown, William Plant and Joanna Stanopoulos, have been selected to attend the German Academy. And Caroline Hall from Jamestown will attend the Latin Academy. Attending the Agricultural Academy are Abigail Holden and Maeve McCaffrey, both from Warhild. Lafayette's Eleanor Clea and Warhild's Shay Stripple will attend the Humanities Academy. And finally, Anna Song from Jamestown is headed to the Virginia Marine Science Academy.
All right, I know it's going to be tight, but we're going to try as we can.
Mr. Shaw, sorry, we've just got one more. Sorry. My apologies. I said "finally" at the wrong time. The following students will attend the Visual and Performing Arts Governors Academy. From Jamestown, Christopher Alstead? Alstad? Christopher? No. And from Warhild, Jan-Lu Lawson and Noah Peterson. And now it's time for our first photograph, Mr. Shaw.
All right, let's get some of you guys over here. Let's try to speed as much as we can.
Guys, watch it forward. Be careful.
Yeah. Have you wrap around?
You're short enough already.
Oh, we're good. Perfect. There you go.
Next, we're recognizing students from the WJCC's Honors Program. The Honors Program offers students an opportunity to take advantage of a highly demanding curriculum. Students graduating from the program have completed a minimum of five advanced placement courses in three different content areas and a four-course sequence in one global language. In addition, these outstanding students designed and completed a service project and an in-depth honors project. WJCC is very proud to have eight honors graduates this year. Unfortunately, tonight's board meeting conflicts with Jamestown Senior Awards tonight. Though the Jamestown students could not join us this evening, they are receiving their award at the school ceremony. We would still like to publicly announce their names and their project's title in recognition of their hard work. Grayson DeBerry, Sustainable Strumming Alternative Materials for Guitar Construction. I like guitar. Riley Rowe, her project was called Sea Perch. Jack Schuman, The Application of Game Theory and Artificial Intelligence to Othello. As a former English teacher, I want to read that one for sure. Stephen Shamingar, Teaching Programming and Its Applications Through Interactive Online Philip Song, Microbial Source Tracking of Fecal Contamination in Queen's Lake, sorry. Nicholas Sang, Impact of 2015 El Nino on the Gulf Stream and Lower Hampton Roads. Two Warhild students are with us tonight. Students, as I call your name and announce your project title, please come forward to be recognized. Cecilia Armstrong. Sidavit Anima Mia, from Choral Music to Wind Ensemble. Addison Ferguson, The History and Americanization of Anorexia. Although we just have one representative tonight, please congratulate again all these Jamestown and Lafayette High Schools were both named Wise Blue Star Schools. This recognition is earned when a school achieves an 80% pass rate on the Financial Literacy Certification test and have either a majority of students on a given grade level take the test, or have students who took it achieve a score of 85% or higher. Would representatives from Jamestown and Lafayette please join us up front on behalf Ms. Swenden, you want to join us?
Ms. Swenden, if you'll be in the picture, please.
Doesn't sound like you had much of a choice there.
Madam Chair, this concludes the recognitions for tonight. We will recognize the students from Norges Rube Goldberg Club at our next meeting.
Will they bring it? Will they reconstruct the?
That would be nice.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I appreciate that and appreciate everyone's willingness to be flexible on the space limitations that we had this evening. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, Public Citizens Comments. Do we have any cards?
There are no speaker cards this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to item 7.01, Federal Program Grants 2017-2018. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Williamsburg James City County Schools receives federal funds for the purpose of supporting certain educational programs and staffing needs. And Mr. Thorpe is here this evening to present a quick overview of Title I, Title II, and Title III grants. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to present the proposed applications for the federal programs Title I, Title II, and Title III grants for the 2017-2018 school year. As a reminder, Title I serves to provide personnel and resources that supplement academic programming and qualifying schools. Title II supports training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. And Title III supports language instruction for students with limited English proficiency. Prior to the development of the Title I grant, our Title I Coordinator, Ms. Laura Burton, she met with each principal and select teachers from each of the Title I schools in order to solicit programmatic ideas for next school year. State funding is formula-based and includes several factors such as enrollment and free and reduced lunch statistics. And while funding formulas allocate the amount that schools receive that are above the division average for free and reduced meals, any student is eligible for services in these schools based on academic need. To share information with our, related to our division's Title I Part A application, here is Laura Burton, Title I Coordinator.
Good evening. Thank you. Our application is consistent with state reform efforts. The proposal that you have provides funding for services and supports that are based on research, provide a source for educational improvement, meets the needs of all students, and develops plans to improve student achievement. And the pie chart shows the budget breakdown for the Title I portion of the grant. As you can see, there is a clear commitment toward the direct services and personnel to deliver these services provided to qualifying students. And these seven elementary schools in our division receive services and supports through Title I. All schools use a targeted assistance model except for James River, which is school-wide. And our emphasis with Title I, planning and delivery continues to be direct services to students, highly trained teachers, effective research-based instructional practices and methods, ongoing professional development, parental involvement, and home literacy resources. With all of these, it is our aim to supplement the quality instruction that students are receiving from their classroom teachers.
Logan, going to come back to you for Title II. So just as a reminder, Title II funds support training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. And Title II supports our division's initiative with collaborative teacher teams, and this used to be called data teams. Collaborative teacher teams incorporates smaller grade-level department teams that examine individual student work generated from common assessments, and also having that collaborative structured scheduled, those collaborative scheduled, excuse me, collaborative structured scheduled meetings that focus on the effectiveness of teaching and learning. And in addition to that, our Title II funding supports 65% of our K.A. literacy coordinator salary, 50% of our secondary math coordinator salary, and 25% of our science coordinator salary. To share information related to our division's Title III application, here is Pat Tillman, Coordinator for ESL and World Languages.
Thank you very much and good evening. WJCC's English as a Second Language Program that is funded through our Title III allocation is based on the four key principles of building capacity programmatically, instructionally, linguistically, and parentally. Our funding priorities for the 2017-2018 fiscal year remain consistent with those principles and build on the progress made this year. Our learning management system is an English learner-specific web-based platform used to manage language instruction, educational plans, student accommodations, goals, and progress, as well as provide language-appropriate communicative tools to keep parents and teachers informed. We will continue to offer sustained professional learning opportunities for those who serve our Ls. Our Newcomers Academy, Extended Learning and Summer Enrichment Programs, provide our language learners with engaging academic and linguistic experiences during the instructional day, after school, and during the summer break. Our final point of funding is dedicated to providing resources, information, and learning opportunities for the families that we serve.
It's an overview of our federal programs grants for Title I, Title II, and Title III. If you have any questions for Ms. Burton, Ms. Tillman, or myself, we'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
I don't have any real questions, but the, I would like to get a copy of this presentation, by the way. I don't think we have it. The, one thing this does point out is how much the Title I and Title II and how much all that money means to us. And it's a, it's a pretty significant funding of our, some of our more needy elementary schools.
It is.
So I just think, we should point out that that's, it's, we have a need for those funds and it's important.
So I know you don't have a crystal ball, but can you give us a sense, given what's going on, given that these are federally designated programs and there's a lot of discussion at the federal level of funding public education, can you give us a sense of the like, is this funding as anticipated pretty secure for the upcoming fiscal year? Or are you, you know, are we worried more years out from now as opposed to what's more immediately in front of us?
Yeah, we can't, we can't speculate on that. I know the guidance that we've received from the State Department to whom we send the applications is, apply as normal. I know we're hearing things at the, at the federal level. If we were to experience some significant cuts, we would evaluate our programs to determine the measurable impact and effectiveness that they're having on kids, and then we would make adjustments to provide the best supports possible at the level of funding that we have.
Just think it's important to be clear-eyed about
Yes, ma'am.
...the vulnerabilities that we may be facing, given what's going on at the federal level, so. Any other questions for Mr. Thorpe or Ms. Burton, or Ms. Tillman? Thank you all very much. The next item is 7.02, VHSL Membership. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual request that comes to the board, and Mr. Alstad is here to answer your questions tonight. It involves the VHSL membership and catastrophic insurance that comes along with that. Russell, want to give us a quick overview of what's involved?
Sure. Evening, board. The League has accepted a proposal for student accident and liability insurance coverage with VA Corp. And that basically provides all members for the 2017-2018 school year, $5.50 per student is what we pay, and it provides premiums on insurance policies. That has a $25,000 deductible and a $3 million lifetime excess medical expense benefit limit. So for us, the membership fee is $800 plus $35 per sport or activity per school. And so you'll notice that each school has slightly different total, and that's just based on varying degrees of student interest at each of our schools in terms of the activities and number of students that participate.
Any questions for Mr. Alstad?
That has always been, every, every year this time, I try to figure out, okay, which, you know, why are they all not the same? And I think Lafayette has two more. They have forensics and student publications that they do that others don't, but the dollar figures is based upon participation, and so they all get multiplied by a different number based upon who participates and all that. So it's just interesting to me what our students choose to participate in different schools.
Dr. Beers, yeah?
Has it made clear to the students and the parents that students who are participating in, I guess the best thing to call them, club sports like lacrosse, some of the ones that are becoming popular, that they're not covered under this particular policy? That's, they know that from the outset.
That's communicated to them, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they're not affiliated with the VHSL whatsoever.
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Alstad.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item 7.03, 2017-2018 Meal Price Increase. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring before you some information about the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, which impacts our meal prices and impacts our meal prices on Mr. Marcellus, Mr. Snipes is here to speak to you this evening. Sorry, Marcellus.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Heron. Tonight, Jane Haley and I, the Child Nutrition Supervisor, are here tonight to provide some information in regards to meal prices increases for the 2017-2018 school year. As Dr. Heron says, Section 205 of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act applies to student lunch prices and to school food authorities that participate in the National School Lunch Program, of which WJCC Schools does. The Act states that if paid lunch price is less than the difference between the total federal reimbursement for a free lunch and the total federal reimbursement for a paid lunch, then the lunch prices must increase. The Act also tells you why they're doing this. They're trying to ensure that the schools provide the same level of support for lunches served to students paying for lunch, as for lunches served for students that receive free and reduced lunch, or that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So under those, under that formula, the difference between the total federal reimbursement for a free lunch and the total federal reimbursement for, for a paid lunch for this school year is $2.86, which is above the paid lunch prices at each of the elementary, middle, and high schools. And elementary schools' lunch prices were $2.60 this year, the middle school lunch prices were $2.70 this year, and the high school lunch prices were $2.85 this year. So respectively, lunch prices were over about 26 cents, 17 cents, and 1 cent. So we had to go up. And we went up by a price of 10 cent on lunches, which is the minimal amount that we could go up this year based on the formula. So lunch prices for the next school year, $2.70 at elementary school, $2.80 at middle school, and for high school, it will range between $2.95 and $3.70 for lunch. Breakfast prices will also increase by 5 cent. This will be the second consecutive year that breakfast prices will increase. Breakfast prices will be $1.35 for elementary, $1.45 for middle, and $1.55 for high school. And so we are asking, and the Superintendent is recommending, that you review this agenda item and be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting on June the 20th.
Any questions? So just to be clear, this is an issue of compliance? If we want to participate in this?
This is an issue of compliance, we, yes.
Okay. And is that also true for the breakfast as well as there are comparable formula that applies?
No, there is no comparable, comparable formula for breakfast. However, Ms. Haley is here can answer any questions in regards to the price increase for breakfast if you have them.
I'd just like to know the thinking.
Last year was the first year that we had increased breakfast prices since 2008, and in that time period, we've had a lot of products that have increased. They have ranged in increase, I pulled some items, anywhere from 81% increase on some of those items to, well, anywhere from 2% to 81% on some of those items. As well, we've had labor that has increased at least, you know, five or six of those years, and in the last two years, we've had increases of 1.5% on labor. So we're just trying to cover some of those costs on the breakfast. In addition, starting with the school year 2015-16, as a result of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, we have to offer a cup of fruit with breakfast, and the students have to take a half a cup. So that's an additional cost that we have to cover with breakfast that we didn't have to cover before.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining the formula. This is the first time I've understood it, so that's, it takes three times for me to get it, so, thank you. Just, do you, do you get feedback on the price of, for lunch? On one hand, it's very reasonable, but on the other hand, if you've got several kids and you're paying every day, it can be, so do you, I'm curious if you-
We receive some, not as much as you would think. I think in general, the community's kind of gotten used to it because of the fact that it is something that we've had to do year after year, so we don't receive as much as you would think.
Any other, oh, yeah.
And as I, as I recall, now nutritional services is, is budget neutral, right?
We're self-supporting, that's correct.
Self-supporting, right. So, so you have, we have a delicate balance there of being able to, to make our, cover our costs as well as make the meals affordable so that
Correct.
the kids can, kids can eat. So I appreciate your good work, and I know that's a, that's a very complicated formula and situation to deal with there, so, but.
It is a bit challenging, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate your, appreciate your help.
And we appreciate the smoothies, too.
The smoothies were good. Actually, I think it's Dr. Heron that paid for the smoothies.
Yeah.
And they will, the smoothies will be at all three high schools next year.
Really?
Yes.
That's great. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Haley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. All right. The next item is 7.04, Child Development Resources Lease Renewal at Lafayette High School. Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, annually, this lease is up for renewal, and it's actually been rewritten this year, and Mr. Snipes is here to provide some information for us.
Again, as Dr. Heron said, this is an annual agreement for you to review and for your subsequent approval. In August of 2016, the school board agreed to extend the CDR lease agreement from September 1, 2016, to August 31, 2017. The annual, annual agreement has been modified this year to remove the stipulation that, for automatic renewals, because we do want to bring this back to you every year so you can approve the lease agreement, which will also give, if ever decided to non-renew, will give CDR the proper 90 days notice that is required. However, we are in constant conversation with CDR every year. We ask them for a letter that they provide to us, which is part of the attachment that lets us know they're ready to renew the lease, that they are not also, that they, that they don't want to break the lease. In addition, Ms. Berta has been in contact with the Division Attorney, who has reviewed the renewal request for CDR and the annual agreement. So again, Superintendent will be asking you to review this agenda item and to vote on it on the 20th of June.
If I could just add, this brings this into line with all of our contracts that must be voted on annually. There's, we're trying to work through all of our contracts, and there aren't any automatic renewals, per the attorney that was on purchasing, that was best practice. So this is not a standalone, every lease contract will come forward on an annual basis to the Board.
Do we have some numbers from CDR in terms of students served, and is there, because I know at, at some point, there was interaction between students at Lafayette High School and what was going on in their programs. I'm just curious about the, the number of, number of students that are, are served and that.
We can certainly ask CDR for, to provide some information to the Board.
I'd like to know.
Kelly.
You know, CDR is an important part of this community. It's been around for a long time, and they're, and they're at least nationally known, if not internationally known, for their, for the work that they do. You know, we, we do have a problem at our high schools with capacity, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't necess, I don't want to throw CDR out, and I know that they need more than 90 days notice, that they're looking to, to relocate that program, so, and I think, and I think, certainly think that we should renew this this year, but I think we need to have a strategic discussion with them going forward, because we are going to have, we are to have capacity issues at our high schools going forward. And so we, we, I would like to see if we have a strategic discussion with them about, you know, maybe they're, they're relocating us using that space for high school, maybe not this, not this year, maybe not next year, but at some point in the future, we got to, we got to look at our, our capacity issues and, and make sure that, you know, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to throw CDR out because they're, they are an important member of this community and have provided wonderful services to this community as well as good research. But, you know, it's, as, as a school system, we need to kind of take a look at our capacity needs and make sure that we're balancing that.
Zombi.
While I concur with Mr. Kelly, I think, and to Dr. Beers' point, as we're looking at revamping our CTE options, I think there's an opportunity to engage and partner with CDR maybe more expansively than we've done. So I think we do need to have a strategic conversation. I think the numbers have kind of ebbed and flowed over the years, the number of our students who participated in the lab portion of the child development piece. So I think that's, that's part and parcel of a larger conversation with our curriculum as well as capacity issues.
I just have a couple of questions. Do we, do we know how many students are served? How many children participate in this program?
At the present time, we will, we can get that information.
I mean, I would like that, and also what programs, they, I mean, do they use creative curriculum, or, I would just would like more information about the program itself, and do we have any oversight over that program, or we, we're just responsible for leasing the facility?
It's a totally separate entity that's working in, in our facility. So we can certainly ask if they would be willing to provide some information about the program for the Board. It's probably, we could probably pull some information from the website as well, but we have no oversight over the program at all.
Okay, thank you. I mean, to echo Mr. Kelly's remarks, CDR is nationally known, the Early Head Start Program that's there is, is not only high-quality, but fills a critical need in our community, and it's, I'm really proud that the administration over the years forged that partnership, and I think it benefits both CDR and, and the School Division and, and the families that we serve. But, but we do need that space ultimately, because we do have space issues at all, at all levels. And so what I'd like to, I guess I'd like to understand two things. The first would be, what's the soonest we could utilize that space for our own purposes, and what trigger points have to happen to, to realize that? So, I mean, if we, I, I want to start by saying I support renewing the lease, but if we were to decide we needed to take possession, there's a lot of steps that have to happen, right? James City County and the city have to approve a CIP request, and then that has to be executed in a fiscal year. So I would like to get a better sense of when we could possibly utilize that space and, and what trigger, what, what decisions have to be made in order to, to make that happen. So a timeline of some kind would be wonderful. And I'd like to also be clear-eyed, every, a couple people have asked for data about CDR's early head start programming there and its impact on students, but I'd like to also understand the impact on CDR if we do need to utilize that space for our own purposes. You know, that would put them in a position where they're having to potentially pay rent. It may impact their local match for federal dollars, so I think that there are some issues that are not black and white that it would, I think we need to be clear-eyed about, because this has been a really meaningful partnership, and unfortunately, we need space. So, yeah, did, did you have anything to say?
Just to add and make, maybe expand on what our chairwoman was mentioning with regard to the space, while we do need the space for capacity issues, we, even if we could be in the space tomorrow, we couldn't use it because it would have to be significantly renovated. So just to make that clear for everyone, and so I guess for everyone to have an understanding of what is the cost, obviously it has to be in the CIP, but what is the cost? What do we have to do right now? That space is configured for preschool children, not for high school children.
And, and as we embark later on in the fall on a conversation about redistricting, the whole idea about capacity, I think hinges, at least in part, on, on that issue, so.
As, as a reminder, we did have the reconfiguration of Lafayette High School Building 900 in the CIP this year, but it wasn't approved. It was approved by this Board, but it wasn't approved by the governing bodies. So that is one thing would need to be reconsidered if we do plan to redistrict and take more students to Lafayette High School.
Just a timeframe on approving the contract.
For-
How much time do we have before we have to sign this?
Usually, we renew at the next board meeting. We bring, for your consideration, we bring back to agree at the next board meeting for one year.
Might be, yeah, might be helpful to have somebody from CDR come in and, and answer, either make a little person, but also answer the question. Because it has been in another school, Lafayette isn't the only school where this was, it was also at Jamestown, but that Board moved it from Jamestown to Lafayette. So I, I just, you know, it, rather than have us do that, all that work, maybe have somebody, you know, just ask somebody from CDR to come in and, you know, we've raised some questions, you know, we'd like to get some information. So I don't know how that fits into the timeframe.
But, yeah, I think before the next meeting would be helpful to know that, the information I think we're asking for may not be relevant to the decision we're making this month, but maybe a year from now?
Sure.
Is that, is that right? Yeah, so, so maybe that's the opportunity to have that strategic discussion and then, and then hear holistically from, yeah.
Or based upon the timeline for, it could be two to three years from now
Correct.
based upon fin, funding and when we could actually get space renovated and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't, I think next year, it's probably not a next year conversation either, but it's
The soonest it could be, yeah.
It's something we have to have, have to have a discussion.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is that good? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Okay, and then item 7.05, Award a Contract for Invitation for Bid Number 17-11422, Auxiliary Gym Edition at Lafayette High School. Dr. Heron.
Madam Chair, Mr. Snipes is staying with us this evening to, to give us some information about the Auxiliary Gym Invitation for Bid.
That's correct, and IFB was issued on April 28, 2017, with the due date of May 30th for the construction of the Lafayette Auxiliary Gym. And again, this project was approved in fiscal year 2017 CIP, and the fiscal 17 CIP and the fiscal 17 year-end spending plan includes a budget amount of $3,500, $3,5605 to support the construction of the Lafayette Auxiliary Gym. The project consists of the Auxiliary Gym Edition at Lafayette. It, the, it includes the access road, sight lighting, a single ply membrane roof, hardwood athletic flooring, gymnasium bleachers, as well as three add alternates. So what we're, what we're expecting is when the, the bid has, returns, we'll be able to provide you at the next meeting with the cost of that construction, as well as if the alternative bids were included.
Questions for Mr. Snipes? We're looking forward to learning more at the next meeting. All right, thank you. That brings us to item 8.01, Advisory Committee Reports. Mrs. Ta, can we start with Mrs. Taylor and the Student Advisory Committee? Would you like to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, this was our slide, so.
Oh, okay, I, we can, that's fine. Mrs. Zombi, would you like to introduce the 21st Century Career Ready? Yeah.
This is Mr. David Kramer. He is our Chair of the 21st Century Career and Ready, I always fumble over it, I want to say CTE Board. So I'm eager, I'm eager to hear his report.
Thank you very much. I've been on the committee for three years, and this is my first year as Chair, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Also, as a side note, I am a former CTE Administrator, so I bring a different slant to the committee also. I am the community representative. Okay, program goals are reflective of the goals of other school divisions within the state of Virginia, providing state art equipment, giving students meaningful experiences, providing relevance outside of subject areas, providing students with career choices, and providing industry-based credentials whenever possible. This PowerPoint is in front of you, as well as the report that we submitted last week. The highlights, there are many, but it can come down to partnership strengthened, experiences delivered, career explorations provided, state and national recognition, community contributions, and fueling the future aspirations of our CTE students, not just seniors, all CTE students. Many, many activities and accomplishments throughout the year. I'm just going to highlight a few. In, I believe it was December, the Toannan Middle School Lego Team went to the robotics competition at Richmond, won first place. Toannan has received grants for, to incorporate Vexic robots into their program, as well as they've received Hummingbird Duo Robot Kits to their program. I think also significant, the first ever, and as a former principal at New Horizons, this kind of warmed my heart, they're starting to reach out to middle school students. They had a career day down at their north campus, the one in- They had a career day down at their north campus, the one in Newport News. And I believe it was December, over 80 Williamsburg, James City County eighth grade students participated. Now, on the high school level, VASTAR, which stands for Virginia Student Training and Refurbishment, I never knew that until I got involved with this. They refurbished 30 computers and 20 printers and provided them to the community. They also received a Best Practice Award in January, I believe it is, for the second year in a row. And also significant, for the second year in a row, Jamestown received recognition for the Y's Top 100. And Lafayette joined them this year. And that is quite a significant achievement, all the high schools in the country. And there are 17 states besides Virginia that require teaching of financial literacy. National Manufacturing Day in October was a success. We increased participation by 58%. The Youth Career Expo in March was attended by 120 students, which was also a significant increase. And then over 650 students during the month of March participated in the career fairs at the three high schools. And there were nearly 30 employers participating in those events also. Also, 300 students attended the 2016 Virginia College Tour at Jamestown at the end of last year. A new event was the Discover Law Program in conjunction with the William &amp; Mary Law School and Law School Admission Council. Over 75 students participated at it in December, I believe it was. And you can see that one picture shows a mock court that they held in conjunction with the event. And of course, alumni from the various local businesses returned to talk to classes. And this one was Lafayette High School. The Society of Naval and Marine Engineers had the sixth annual Boat Design Competition with the Apprentice School in Newport New Shipyard. Our team, the Operation Overboard Team, came in fourth place overall. Although they did have the best time, unfortunately, bonus points were awarded to the other three teams. And that's why they didn't win first place. They also had a reunion race this year. And your worst enemy team tied for first place with students from the class of 2015, 16, and 17 participating. Lafayette placed in the Deco State Leadership Conference in Reston earlier this year. And then two of their students were selected to attend the International Conference in Anaheim in April. Seven Lafayette students and six Jamestown students placed in the Future Business Leaders of America Regional Competition. And three Lafayette students advanced to the FBLA State Competition in Reston. Warwick had some interesting events, especially with their Project Lead the Way students. Their students supported seatbelt safety awareness by designing and building a Jeep model. You can see the picture right there, that promoted seatbelt awareness within the high schools. The Coding Club designed, programmed, and launched an application for the police department that they're actually using as for tablets where citizens can report things anonymously. And it works quite well. And then, of course, the computer-integrated manufacturing students designed and fabricated parts for a local company to support their software solutions. We have, if you look at our report, at the end of it, we have 12 recommendations and more detail than these seven right here. But these are seven that we wanted to highlight. And I do want to thank Liz Parker, who has been working with the committee this year. And she, the two of us, with the help of the rest of the committee, came up with these recommendations. We do believe we need to configure, and I believe Liz is in the process of doing that, a CTE section of the student information system. This will help in reporting specifically as relates to special populations, student credentialing, and completer status. And we think that is very important. We do believe it's important to continue to expand the early college program. We do know it's going beyond War Hill. And that's important to promote that, as well as to do enrollment programs with Thomas Nelson. We also feel it's important to partner with TNCC and Health Sciences, specifically CNA, pharmacy tech, and dental hygiene. I personally have a lot of awareness about dental hygiene, having had a dental assistant program at New Horizons. And that is, that is a very lucrative profession for our students to look into going into. And I think it's something very, and I know they have a wonderful program at TNCC, very competitive though. And I do believe it's something we should look into. Of course, with the changes at New Horizons taking place over the next couple of years, we do believe that student participation needs to continue to be promoted. Liz has also implemented an academic and career plan, which better outlines the future for students and what they can go into and get involved in it. But I think it's more important is it engages parents. And we felt that was very important to engage parents. And a lot of, a lot of parents see the plan in seventh grade and then don't even hear about it for, for four or five years, or ever. And continue funding industry credentialing. And of course, this includes pre-testing and retesting of students if it's necessary. I think that's important. And then the last one is the Naviance. It's something we think you should, we should examine and consider acquiring. It's a comprehensive college and career readiness platform. And there's a few more details on that in your, in your report. And that completes my report, unless there are any questions or anyone would like to add anything.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Kramer?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kramer, or Ms. Parker, or Ms. Zombi, or any comments? Yeah.
Just a few comments. Just wanted to note that there's been an incredible depth and breadth of CTE activities this year. And we've done that without a designated coordinator, CTE coordinator for an entire academic year. And so I'm looking forward to seeing the marvelous things we'll be able to do this coming school year with guidance and direction from Dr. Carroll as it relates to his Assistant Superintendent Position and focusing on CTE. So we've done a lot. And so I thank the staff for filling in.
Thank you.
Newman's work.
Is there anyone else from the committee here that you'd like to introduce? Or is there just one?
No, just the three of us.
Excellent.
We form a triangle.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Taylor, would you like to talk a little bit about the Student Advisory Committee Report?
Sure. I know most of us in here know what the Student Advisory Committee is. But for the benefit of those who are unsure, it's actually a committee composed of the superintendent and designated two school board members, which are myself and Ms. Zombi, and 12 students. So each of our high schools is represented in that. And it's meant to give students a voice and share information with us and helps us work better with them. Just a quick snapshot of some of the things we talked about this year. We talked about school start times. There are a lot of advantages and disadvantages that our students saw to starting earlier and staying at the same time we have now. We talked about the great things about high school, like the athletic programs and the great relationships they have with teachers and staff and administrators. And we talked about what could be better. Of course, they brought up food, always, SAT preparation and things like that. We also talked about what they would like to see in the future, like not taking SOLs. We also talked about redistricting, which is a topic that we have to talk about. And one of the changes that we made earlier this year was to have students serve a two-year term on the committee. Any questions?
Questions for?
Comments?
Student Advisory Committee is a lot of fun, I think. The engagement you get from those kids is amazing. They are not intimidated by the adults in the room, and they will let you know. And so I really appreciate their input and what they provide for us. I do want to acknowledge that, you know, there's, one of the members of this committee is struggling. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we have him in our thoughts and prayers going forward.
Anything else? Anything else on Student Advisory? Well, thank you very much for all that hard work. The next Advisory Committee Report is Special Education Advisory Committee. Ms. Zombi, would you like to introduce that?
I'd like to introduce Julie Cullifer, who is the Chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I've enjoyed getting to know her this year and look forward to hearing her report.
Oh, good evening, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Julie Cullifer, and since December, I have served as the Chair for the Special Education Advisory Committee, or CAC as it is known. I'm here tonight to provide a brief summary of our annual report and speak frankly about where we see challenges and where we see room for improvement. This year has been a year of rebuilding for the CAC. We have spent the last six months increasing our membership to include individuals with a wide variety of knowledge and experience in order that we may be fully, be a fully functioning CAC. I am pleased to report that the CAC no longer requires rolling enrollment for membership. As a committee, we intentionally examined the role and function of CAC and how that pertains to our responsibility to you, the division, the students, parents, and the larger community. This process has led us to identify a couple of areas where improvement is needed with respect to the organization and work of the CAC going forward. According to the Virginia Department of Education Regulations that pertain to the Special Education Advisory Committees, CACs have six functions. They are to advise the school division of the needs and the education of children with disabilities, participate in the development of priorities and strategies for meeting identified needs, submit periodic reports and recommendations, assist the school division in interpreting plans to the community, review policies and procedures prior to submission to the local school board, and to participate in the review of the local school division's annual plan. In reviewing prior CAC activity over the past several years, it is our conclusion that the CAC has not effectively fulfilled our obligation under the VDOE regulation. As a committee, we are dedicated to being a fully functioning CAC and would like to work collaboratively with the school division to fulfill our role as advisors on matters as they pertain to or could potentially impact special education students. I believe several opportunities exist throughout the year for the CAC to be included in policy and budgetary discussions, allowing us to provide a unique perspective. Throughout the transition process, we looked to the current WJCC CAC bylaws for guidance on how to proceed or to determine proper protocol. But discovered that our CAC bylaws are insufficient in directing members as to the purpose of the CAC and the roles necessary for its function. As a committee, we have agreed to meet this summer to begin the process of revising our bylaws. As Chair, I have reached out to several CACs throughout the state to discuss the status and information contained in their bylaws, to gather general information as to any norms that may exist. It is my intent for the CAC to have a draft submission to the board for comment and review in the fall. Looking ahead to next year in our annual report, the CAC provided three recommendations to the board for consideration. The first recommendation, I have already addressed in my discussion of the role and responsibilities of the CAC and our desire to have an increased relationship with the division on matters pertaining to special education. The second recommendation for the division was the consideration of the hiring of a board-certified behavior analyst, or BCBA. BCBA's are behaviorists by education and are trained in the use of a set of applied principles to determine how behavior works and how learning takes place. This practice is known as Applied Behavioral Analysis, or ABA. Utilizing its principles, ABA has proven to help reduce behaviors that may interfere with learning and that may be harmful. ABA can be used to increase communication skills, improve attention, focus, social skills, memory, and academics. Thus-decreasing problem behaviors. ABA is an evidence-based practice having passed the scientific test of its usefulness, quality, and effectiveness. While ABA is largely associated as an intervention for children with autism spectrum disorder, ABA being a set of principles about behavior and learning can be applied to anyone. A division-wide BCBA could fill many roles from overseeing the execution of functional behavioral assessments and behavior intervention plans, aiding in the proper implementation of system-wide positive behavioral support models, and provide consultation and training to general education teachers and the inclusion of special education students in their classrooms. While we are well aware of the budgetary constraints facing the division, we are also aware of the continued rising numbers of special education students each year and the increasing behavioral challenges seen in the schools. The CAC would like to recommend that the division explore the way in which BCBA's are being utilized in other school divisions and any data that would pertain to the effectiveness of those programs. Lastly, the CAC recommends that an elopement protocol be established at each school within the division. Elopement, or wandering, is best defined as the inherent risk associated when a child, especially one with a disability, leaves the supervision of a qualified caretaker, the classroom, facility, or school grounds for unknown reasons. A study conducted by the Cohen's Children Medical Center of New York reported that each year, more than 250,000 school-aged children with autism or other developmental disorders wander away from adult supervision, risking their safety. Children between the ages of six and 11 were most at risk for elopement. Likewise, the National Autism Association reports roughly half of all children with autism will at some point during their childhood attempt to elope from a safe environment. And that a child with autism is eight times more likely to elope between the ages of seven and 10 than their typically developing peers. The response to an elopement situation of a special needs child would not only be urgent, but require a particular form of response. A special needs child might be nonverbal and not able to respond to someone calling their name. This same child might be frightened by sirens and loud noises, meaning they may run away from first responders. The CAC would like to urge the division to reach, to research and draft a policy that would help ensure that the division is prepared for such an unfortunate circumstance. The CAC would be willing to offer our knowledge and experiences in any help crafting such policies. I would like to thank the WJCC School Board and Division for their commitment to the education and well-being of all their students, particularly those with special needs. The Special Education Advisory Committee looks forward to the upcoming school year and being of better service to the division in our shared aim to support and educate special needs students in the division. At this time, I would like to recognize the members of the CAC that are here tonight. We have Beth Haw, Karen Newman, Chris Woski, and Diana Anderson.
Thank you for all, all for your service and for being here this evening. Does anyone have any questions for staff or CAC members? Comments?
I have a process question and then comments as well. Since I'm relatively new to the school board, we have recommendations before us. What's the next step? Is there an opportunity for us to deliberate their recommendations? What's the next step?
Well, I mean, I think overall it would depend on the recommendations. So if it's a recommendation, for instance, with a budgetary implication, then the next step I would think would be to discuss that as part of the budget development process. So, you know, and work with the superintendent to see if that's something that, you know, is, is possible with the budget restraints that we have. If it's a policy question, then it would be to work with Mrs. Hummel, Ms. Hummel and Mrs. Taylor on the policy. If it's a procedural thing, then that's administration. So that, so it sort of depends? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, yes. So next step, so I think it's important for us as a board to consider the elopement policy. So would that automatically then go to Ms. Hummel and Ms. Taylor for something to consider?
Right, so, so is it a protocol, a procedure?
It probably would be a building-based procedure.
Right. So, Dr. Heron, do you have any comments on that?
I think if the board reviews the committee's recommendations and discusses those, then you can respond or ask administration to look into some of the recommendations on your behalf. Because the recommendations come into the board first of all.
Right. So that's the guidance I was looking for. So I think that we need to definitely examine the elopement. So if we can ask staff to look at the next step for creating a procedure for that. And then with regard to the CAC being able to effectively provide input in their advisory capacity, I was wondering, particularly at the budget level, our first budget retreat, which is in January or February, is open to the public anyways. But if we could put in place a process to formally invite CAC leadership to come, just, I mean, it's open to the public anyways, but to invite them to come so that they're hearing this budget information at the same time that we are hearing it as well. Not that they would necessarily be sitting at the table, but, but just a formal, yes, come so that you're hearing this, so that they have an idea of how the budget's going to impact students with disabilities. so that they have an idea of how the budget's going to impact students with disabilities. And then likewise with regard to policy decisions, I know we have a, we have a policy committee. The SEAC does not have a policy committee, but Ms. Hummel and Ms. Taylor are, you know, going through all of our policies on a regular basis. I wondered if the SEAC couldn't also create a policy committee who could then start looking at our policies and if they, if they see something that they believe is negatively impacting students with disabilities, they could then bring that to our policy committee.
And likewise, when things have come through policy that could impact, it has been.
Although I think that's where we sometimes, we are not looking at it with a tunnel vision. And so I think when we're looking at policies, we don't have a sped-ed perspective. And so sometimes we look at policies without understanding the, the impact of special needs. So without having someone from SEAC at each and every one of the policy committee meetings, if they could just start to begin to look at our policies as they see fit.
Ms. Ombi, we do have a, a procedure that is in place. Administration will bring policies that need review to the Board and to the Policy Committee, and our special education staff review those in detail. And I know previously they've actually taken those policies to SEAC for their input, and then they bring them forward to the Board for their consideration. So we do go through a process to give a voice to SEAC in, in the process with special education issues.
Yes, and I, and I understand that we do that. I guess Julie and I have had this conversation multiple times. I, I think though, even like zero tolerance. I think most people would think that's, doesn't impact students with disabilities. It's not something that we would necessarily ask SEAC to weigh in on. But that might negatively impact a student with a disability. Zero tolerance for a behavioral outburst. Maybe Ms. Culliver could, could expand on that.
So I think like the last reference point we have for that is the restraint and seclusion policy debate that, that occurred around that. And I know I have expressed my opinion to Ms. Ombi that I would prefer us not to have to rally the public and show up and have to have, you know, provide citizens' comments on a policy when, you know, as an advisory committee, you know, when we were given the right to see it, but we were given the right to see it once the policy had been written and had been, was getting ready to be reviewed. It wasn't at a stage where it could have been significantly changed. And so as a result, we spent, you know, two months standing up here having to say like, you know, this policy has significant negative repercussions. And I think that as a community and also as a division, it would be nice if those discussions could have been had privately or before, before as opposed to turning it into this very embroiled type of conversation. At that time, you know, it was in the press two or three times. You know, there were three or four board meetings where different SEAC members were getting up and having to speak against that policy. Whereas if that policy had been given, if we had been given knowledge that that policy was being drafted and been given a voice throughout the drafting process of that policy, just to say, well, we have the, we have the luxury as the SEAC to be able to look at something with a very singular view. Like, everyone on that committee is a parent of a child with special needs. Some of us have, have typically developing children, but some of us have just special needs. But either way, when we put our SEAC hats on, we are only looking at it from that viewpoint. And I think if we would have had more introduction and more, more exposure to that before it got to where it was in the policy process through your process, we could have negated that whole long debate.
Yeah, I, can I?
Sure, absolutely.
I, I agree. I, I, I would prefer that, that we use staff, that recommendations go to the superintendent, and, and then they are turned over to those really qualified to, to find out which ones are feasible, which ones are operational, which ones are cost, which ones will have an additional cost. But I also think rather, before coming back to the Board, with that is to, is to meet with, with representatives of SEAC, is to just go over those. Here's our, here's our take on the recommendations. What do you think? Or, or, you know, is there, should this get modified? Rather, then you just, you know, you're, you're sitting at a table and you're just talking to each other about, you know, the best way to deal with that. And then when, I don't know whether you say when you're satisfied or when you come to agreement on, this is what we think will work, then it comes back to the Board rather than going to the Board first and then, I mean, it's come to the Board because you're a Board Advisory Committee, and I understand that. But I, I, I like the idea of taking them seriously, turning them over to the superintendent and staff, get their take on it with your additional input. Because not just the recommendations, but what, what the committee thinks about, how, how, how staff perceives those or which ones they think are manageable or, you know, if there's a cost factor, whatever, whatever it might be. I mean, that's my, that would be, that would be my recommendation to the Board mainly.
And I, and I think that there are times when there's, you know, it's unfortunate, but there's not going to be agreement. I mean, the Board has to take, follow legal counsel oftentimes in that. And so with the, you know, so there's, with that particular instance, you know, I'm, having been involved with that, I'm not sure it would have had a different conclusion. It may have, but, but at the end of the day, we took the recommendation of, of legal counsel. So with that said, I, I think in an ideal world, when there are, but there's sometimes when, when that agreement that you talked about, Dr. Beers, isn't possible.
And I don't think that we're asking for the agreement. Like, because we understand that we're an advisory, and in fact, at the end of the day, I feel like we actually did come together and achieve an agreement. Like, we walked away and the SEAC was, was, was pleased with the outcome. My, my hope and suggestion is, is if that the process was changed just slightly, it wouldn't have had to be a public event where we were having to coordinate people coming to the meetings to discuss it because it had already kind of been decided upon before we got to the voting process. That's all that I'm saying. We're not asked, we're not, just because we, we recommend something, we have no assumption that you all are going to accept it, agree with it, or take it. But I feel like, you know, it's our role to review these things and to have a say. And if we're having a say after it's been pretty much decided and then it has to become, you know, I think, I think during that process, I spoke before the Board against it at the time to have certain things changed. It's not once, but twice, I believe. And I think that we could have done it in a much quicker process if it had, we had been given time to actually respond and then you all time to consider our responses. See, we were presented it, which was nice and we appreciate that. But we, when our comments, we didn't have enough time for our comments and concerns to be presented to the Policy Committee before it was being presented to the whole Board.
Can I just make a? Yeah, because we saw it twice. Yeah, go ahead.
No, the, I think what you're referring to the.
Restraining.
Restraining policy. I remember that well. The, the one thing that I came away from that is that when it, when it comes to special, because of your position as an advisory committee and because there are parents on there that are dealing with their children on a day-to-day basis, which is extremely difficult for many families. The fact that they could have, I mean, I'm looking at the policies today. None of those would have be involved with the SEAC. But there are those that, that could, I mean, if they're going to be an advisory committee, we should be using them as an advisory committee or what is their purpose. And I do agree, Madam Chair, that there would, might be times, and maybe many, were because of legal ramifications that, that we couldn't do things differently. But I do think it would be important to involve, involve them in developing policy, especially since that's an additional resource. And we have wonderful staff people that are well-equipped to do that also. But it doesn't hurt to have another voice.
I guess, just, yes, just to reiterate what Mrs. Young is, is commenting on. I think our, the CAC's desire is, is just to be included in the advisory, to have an opportunity to be in an advisory role sooner rather than later. So if there's a way that we can, can adjust the way we do business so that we can ensure that they have an opportunity to, to advise on policy issues and budget issues. And I think for the first time in a very, very long time, I know in my 25 years, SEAC is in a position to do that with leadership and a fully-staffed committee. And so it would be a disservice to the Division to not tap into that resource. And so I think if, if there's just a way to ensure that they're involved in that process early on is what we're getting at. And then to the, to the budget piece, I, I am curious and would like to know the, the budget implication to, to bring on board a consultant, an ABA consultant. So there are three recommendations. So I guess for me as a, as a school board member, but also the SEAC liaison, would like to know what the next steps are with regard to those, those three recommendations.
I just, in terms of process, you know, the, under Mr. Kelly's leadership, two years ago, I believe, or was it three, you know, establish the policy committee and the staff established protocols. And just like it's our job to make sure that we, we are on the governance side and that the administration is on the administration side, our advisory committees, I believe. So I just think we need to be really clear-eyed about, and about our advisory committee staying on that advisory side and allowing administration and staff to do their work and, and making sure that those, that they're able to develop those policies and bring them to the Policy Committee. Because I don't think you want to get in a situation where, I mean, I, I think you do want Policy Committee to, to go through that process first, to bring it to the Board before it goes to an advisory committee. I think that that has to be a collaborative process. And so getting, I would be concerned about this Board asking the administration to include an advisory committee too early in the process and crossing those administrative lines. So I just, I don't think that that's what you're asking, but I want to be clear about that.
I can just speak to that briefly. So we are actually governed by a set of regulations through the VDOE. And the, and those regulations actually state that we are supposed to review policies and procedures prior to submission to the School Board. So.
That's exactly right.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding what I'm hearing you saying is not that. Yeah, I'm hearing you say, I mean, I haven't, we have no intention of getting in the weeds and drafting the policies. What, what our intention is, is to, if there is something that is going to potentially impact the special needs community, we would just like to see it and be able to say, have you thought of it from this perspective? And that's it. That's all the role is. But if we aren't given that opportunity till after you all have pretty much solidified what you want to do, then the only recourse we have is to be, is to then have to activate and, and provide citizen comments and all of that. And that's really not what our role is. Our role is really to do it prior to that as, as a helpmate to you all.
Madam Chair, perhaps the Policy Committee of the Board could actually look at the process and maybe delineate the steps of what would be the best time to give SEAC input into a policy coming forward and bring it back to the Board for consideration.
I'd be interested in the administration's recommendation on that, yeah.
And we can actually be part of that as well.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, Ms. Culliver, I appreciate your leadership and engagement in this, in the SEAC. The, the Committee and this Board needs your energy and, and go get them to there. So I, I appreciate that. Jumping off on what Mrs. Ombi said earlier about the, the elopement protocol, I think it's appropriate for us to ask the administration to look at the, look at the processes at each of the schools to see if there, see if there is a protocol that exists, if something needs to be developed. I don't know if the Board needs to develop a policy or if it's included in other things. But, I mean, I think, I think we just need to set the administration off to go, go review our procedures if situations such as this would occur and how that would be handled at the schools today. So.
So you're asking for the administration's recommendation regarding that topic?
Just to review, to review the recommendation three and see if they think there are any actions that are, that are appropriate to take for that.
Oh, just to that, I was going to say that if you look at law enforcement, law enforcement actually has a lot of research about how they actually have specific trainings to respond to that. They actually have specific tactical teams to respond to that when it's a special-needs child. And so I think that that's kind of what we're looking at. I'm still trying to understand your processes and procedures and protocols, so please forgive me if the language is not correct. I understand that we can ask for this and, and I actually really like the fact that we give ownership to the school. So it would be more that if we could just get the Division to, to say, you know, get behind the idea that, to say to each school, direct each school, please create a specific elopement protocol. And the elopement protocol is going to look different from school to school. It should look different. You have some schools that are near waterways and drowning is a huge issue and they don't, it does not take much, much for drowning. You have some that are near highway. I mean, so it's, the elopement protocol should not be a Division-wide type of thing. It's going to be, need to be case-specific to the school, giving the surrounding area in which the school exists. Thank you.
Culliver, thank you. I'd like to echo Mr. Kelly's thanks to your work on SEAC and also in the community. Okay, that brings us to 9.01. Rev, well, actually, all of these policies are G policies. So I guess I'll turn them over to you, Mrs. Taylor, and then you can introduce them as a group to hand it over to administration.
Yes, all of these are related to WJCC staff. So Mr. Baker is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well done, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, do you want to just go through 9.01 through 9.08 in rapid succession?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Heron. Policy GA is, there was a change in Virginia law and VSBA changed their policies and we were to implement our policy to mirror VSBA. And this is, there's a prohibition from school employees to assist any individual who knows or believes to know that somebody's engaged in sexual misconduct. And so they've, they've implemented a law here in Virginia, so more probably for HR-type folks that, you know, somebody who's applying for a job at another school division, I can't help them get another job to get them out of my school division if I know they, they've engaged in sexual misconduct. So we've updated our policy to, to reflect that.
Is that what the first sentence in paragraph two is supposed to say?
Yeah, I mean, we have our attorney review it, and, and so that's what, that's basically saying. And we're dealing with our attorney to not actually change any of our practice. It's just to update the, the law, so.
I'm going to take your word for it, because if I was to do a fishbone diagram of that, I don't know where I'd come out. Back in the days when you used diagram sentences.
Sure. The next.
Any other, any, any questions?
The next policy is GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation. Again, we just want to have our policy mirror VSBA's policies. And so our attorney has reviewed it. And it's just to kind of simplify our policy to mirror their policy. One of the kind of main questions on this one that some people ask is like, there's an issue of when people do extracurricular-type activities, if I'm the track coach or I'm the debate team coach, and if that's part of somebody's contract, the way the new regulation reads is, it's not a, a part of your continuing contract. It's not something that, that they have any kind of right to. It's not something they could grieve. If I said, hey, I don't need you to be the debate team coach next year, they can't say, I have a right to that. That's a property right. I know we don't have tenure in Virginia, but, so it just makes that clear. And it just updates ours to mirror VSBA. The next one I have is 9.03. I'm sorry.
I love what you did.
Okay.
Same thing. It's one sentence.
Just to make it simpler.
I guess so.
And to mirror VSBA's, which is just one line, to make it simpler. And so we're trying to say, yep, we will bring you forward the salary scales, which we've already done this year and done the last few years, to make it one line. The next one is 9.04, retire policy GC, CGCD, and then actually replace it with policy GBN, which is simpler and also mirrors VSBA's policy in terms of staffing and recruiting.
So in, in the Board docs, the GB, the VSBA is called CGCGD, but we're calling it GBN. Is there any reason for the different coding?
Can you repeat that?
So the VSBA sample has a different name.
I wasn't serious. It's actually, I believe, it's, I think they're referencing GCDA in the VSBA sample, but it's actually their policy, GBN. And ours is going to code it the same way as theirs, I believe.
Right, well, it's fine.
To simplify.
Okay.
Okay. The next one we have is policy GCDA, conditions of employment, nine point zero five. And this is just kind of to bring us in line with other school divisions and other employers in terms of background and fingerprint cost. Currently, the school division pays for that. The cap, the cost is actually going down. It's going to be, I think, beginning next year is $35. It's $25 for fingerprinting and $10 for child protective services. And so what we've recommended to do, along with our neighbors who already do it this way, is to have the applicant incur that cost and not the school division. But we checked with Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Pecosa, and Portsmouth, Virginia Beach and York, Virginia Beach and York, and they all have the applicant, new employee, pay for it. The only outlier I could find was Gloucester currently. They pay for it, so. And right now, it's going to be, I think, about $35. The next one I have is nine point zero six, policy GCI, professional staff and assignments. And this, again, just simplifies it and makes it one paragraph versus a whole page, just basically saying that the superintendent can move folks around. And the last two I have are about kind of standard procedure for in terms of people who resign. These, we've asked our attorney, these have been working for us. And so we said, you know, most of our employees realize we have some policies that are geared for teachers, some policies that are geared for non-teachers. And so what we asked our attorney was, can people understand it? Are you do it this way? It hasn't been updated in a while. So we just wanted to say, can, is this still valid? And our attorney said, yeah, you can still do it this way. I know there's, was a question about, should we combine them? The attorney said we didn't have to. If everybody understands, our policy's basically pretty similar, just saying, give us a two-week notice. And so we asked to keep it the same and just to review it and update it. And our attorney said that was fine. So that was the last two, nine point zero seven for support staff, and then nine point zero eight kind of geared for teachers.
So we're not making any changes of those.
No, actually, zero change. Exactly. You're exactly right. And just to update it from the old date. And that's all I had.
That's a whole pile of them. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. All right, that brings us to 10 point zero one, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personal action, personnel actions as presented.
Second. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10 point zero two, approved release from compulsory attendance, case number R seventeen dash zero six. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the release from compulsory attendance for case number R seventeen dash zero six.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? It's moved and seconded. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, 11 point zero one, board member comments. Ms. Ombi, anything to share with us this evening?
Of course she does.
Just have a few comments. So I wanted to thank Robin Ford for the tour of Matthew Whaley. It is such a unique school, and I really enjoy touring the schools and learning about each school's strengths and challenges and, and how they're each different from the other. I was particularly impressed with their summer academy for their English language learners and their families and how that's impacting the families at Matthew Whaley. And that's something that's unique to that school. It is an exciting time of year with band and sports banquet, so many students are earning their letters, sometimes for the first time. Other students are just continuing with their bars. Some are saying goodbye. Wanted to congratulate all of our students for their hard work for this academic year. And I'm looking forward to attending three high school graduations. So, exciting time of year.
Dr. Beers?
I would like to applaud all the student accomplishments that were discovered tonight at, at this meeting. It's, I mean, it just, it, it continues, and I, I shouldn't be amazed. I, somebody asked me today, if, if somebody didn't know the school system, what would you tell them about it? And one of the things that I would say is, we're, we're among the tops of the tops in not just the Commonwealth, but, but across the country. It's just, it's amazing. I think the other thing that's amazing is that there are so many different kinds of opportunities available to so many different kinds of students, which is, I, I think, just a real testament to, to our, our staff, to the teachers, to, because there's, a lot of creativity has gone into some of those things. And I just think it's really something, really remarkable. I think being able to attend an academy that deals with an area that you're particularly interested in this summer is, is, I think is something very special, that students are able to do that. And I also look forward to recognizing, honoring, and being really humbled by those three graduation ceremonies this, this Saturday?
Seventeenth.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday.
Don't rush, don't rush.
Don't show up this weekend.
Because I, I, it will be my, first time, I was unable to do that last year. But it'll be the first time I've gone to a high school graduation since my youngest graduated many, many, many years ago. So I look forward to that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Chair, the privilege last week, and last week of going to the Governor's School Recognition Ceremony at the Ferguson Center at CNU. And a lot of amazing kids at that Governor's School and several, several WJCC students. In particular, one, one of our Lafayette students was, was the co-master of ceremonies. And she is, she was recognized as getting a full scholarship to Yale paid for by the Air Force. And so it was a pretty special, pretty special event. Also, last week, Mr. Baker and I had the privilege of attending the National Honor Society induction ceremony at Jamestown, although we were probably there for more personal reasons than we were for official reasons. And last night, along with Mrs. Cook, I attended the GED completion ceremony. Always one of my favorite events of the evening, or the, of this, this time of the year, with those, those, who didn't do high school necessarily the conventional way and life kind of got in the way for them. And to see them pull it together and go through that rigorous program in order to get their GED is truly an accomplishment and something that they should be very proud of. And so I always try to make it a point to attend that because I, I just think those, those students deserve that recognition. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Bye.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, I'm not asleep, really, but I was just thinking about the number of students that we were able to recognize tonight for being selected to go to the Governor's Academy. I'm, and for those students that have received honors in graduation, I'm, I think that's wonderful. I'm, I'm, I'm a little envious. I don't think they had those eons ago. I'm looking forward to the early college scholars ceremony tomorrow night, along with pathways. I don't know how we're going to split that up, but I'm looking forward to that because that was wonderful last year. And I'm also looking forward to the three graduation ceremonies and look forward to honoring our graduates. And want to congratulate our staff for a job well done this year.
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor?
Yes, to echo what everyone said, congratulations to all our students who are here with us this evening to celebrate their accomplishments. And also, I was able to attend the retreat for our team here. That was great, that we were able to do that. And I, too, am looking forward to graduation on the seventeenth. All three. Exciting.
Yes. Thank you very much. So I wanted to remark on, I think, Mrs. or Ms. Ombi, Dr. Heron, and Ms. Hummel and I attended Screenagers, Screenage, is that how you say it? I said something you didn't say. And that, and that was a film about how terrifying it is that all these digital devices are controlling our children's minds. But it was really helpful to watch that and, and helped me look at that issue through a different lens. The retirement and PIN ceremony is always a really special event. I appreciate the, just that, the educational excellence that's in that room is just remarkable. And I appreciate staff's work to make that happen and make sure that those employees are honored for their incredible dedication to our division. Like Mrs. Taylor, I'd just like to say the VSBA retreat was really very helpful. And thanks to all of you for, for participating heartily in that. And shortly thereafter, we, several of us attended the Freedom of Information Act workshop that Silver Camp Smith put together for us and for staff. And so that's good. We're making sure that we're mindful of making sure that we are open and transparent in all that we do. So I appreciate everyone's commitment to that. The GED ceremony was wonderful. I wanted to thank supervisors Larson, Sadler, and McGlinnan for attending and, and celebrating those thirty-some-odd GED and ISAEP certificate achievements. And on, also this weekend, I attended the Williamsburg James City County Scholarship Fund, which is sponsored by the, put on by the Williamsburg Community Foundation. And so the 2017 scholarship recipients, there were 51 WJCC students that received over almost $62,000 worth of scholarships. So that was really a fun thing to, to watch. And another reason for all of us to be proud, not only of that, those students and their achievement, but the philanthropic commitment that this community has to support education. So that was really incredible. But I think, I think that's it. Anything else? All right. All right, that brings us to 12 point zero one, upcoming events. Early college scholars tomorrow, as Mrs. Young said, in addition to the pathways celebration. Graduation is on the seventeenth at William and Mary Hall. And the policy committee is going to meet on June 21st at 4:00 PM with a new lens on thinking about it from the CAC perspective. So. And then the upcoming meetings, item 12 point zero two, we have a closed session later on this month at 5:00 on the 20th of June at the Stryker Center, followed at 6:30 with a regular meeting. And then we have only one July meeting next month, and that is a closed session at seven, on, on the 11th of July at 5:00 PM here in the annex, and then followed by a work session at 6:30. And that'll be a work session of action items. Did I miss anything? And so in terms of setting the agenda for the next regular meeting, we, we discussed the proposed agenda items. There are five of them, and they will migrate onto our agenda. And of course, we have the consent, which is the policies and financial reports and personnel. And I don't think there's anything else that, okay. So we've, Sersa, you got that?
I have.
We are good. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned.